Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great unity of justice for all.
Check, check, check. All right, well, with the legislature playing havoc with some of our schedules, this is now when we usually do the organization, so we do have a short-term, six-month organization. I know we've discussed having, just continuing it and then going through the next, having it in January, that becoming the month that it goes for, you know, to elect for now on, so, you know, I'm looking, I know I need to read the resolution, but I was looking just to extend the current one for the six months and then let the new board, when they get together as a new seven in January, select their leadership for that, you know, entire year versus half of a board year, so I move that we extend the current leadership through the rest of the year and then go for that. I'll have to read it out loud because that is something that we'll have to sign.
Do you mean just need me to second it or are you good?
Let me read it first, so, hand.
Let me see it better up there or not.
Yeah, there we go. Let it be resolved at the Board of Ed. Education, United States School District, number 469, Lebon County, Kansas, extend the terms of the current board president, Jeff Martin, current board vice president, Beth Stevenson, until successors for such positions are elected by the board in the first meeting of the board occurring after, on or after, the second Monday in January 2020. I need a second. You got a second? The additional discussion? Claudia?
I do.
Yep, John?
I have mixed emotions on it. I'd like to maybe see it now, and the reason is whoever would become president would have five months of hell if things were to rise. Possibly in January, there can be four new board members and only one board member with more than two years' experience here, and I'm not saying it's going to flounder, but we wouldn't have a lot of backup or a lot of history and experience going forward. You know what I mean? I mean, I'm not saying, I just have, that's a concern I have about that is whoever, if we put somebody in tonight, we'd have five months of you helping out possibly, or you, or you, or you. If we wait till January, and I'm not saying Beth can't do it, but you've got four brand-new ones that have nothing, you know, and that's just a concern I have.
I think it's a good one, but I'm also concerned that we, Beth is a walking encyclopedia.
I know.
She can help you. You know, you can call Jeff if you really, really, really need to.
I'm just...
Yeah. I know where you're coming from, and there's been times when I'd say, well, go ahead and make so-and-so president because they can do the job and they'll still be here, but we're down to...
No, no, I just, that's just a concern I have.
And I hear that concern. On the flip side of that, I feel like the four board members that get elected in November should have a voice in that decision.
That's true, too.
That's why I'm in favor of waiting and just extending what we have and then, you know, doing that in January.
Before their first official board meeting, are you going to have any kind of a training session?
Yes, we'll have one after the election between then and when they...
Okay, so they kind of know what to expect, and you could discuss then that they're going to have to find somebody to do these jobs?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we also learned, and Jeff has brought this up several times, that in regards to the superintendent's evaluation, the lesson learned is we don't want new people making critical decisions like that, so...
With no experience.
So who better knows the people that are available than the people that are sitting around the board, and that's why Jeff wants to move, wanted to move the evaluation to the superintendent back to December to make sure that the seven of us did the evaluation and not potentially four new members. So the concept about new board members, if there is a concern for, there obviously is a concern for them, and that's why Jeff wanted to not allow them to participate in the evaluation of the superintendent. So same level of responsibility is rating the superintendent and choosing the president.
And it does take at least a year to really get your sea legs and figure out what the heck you're doing.
Right. And my objection to it is the timing. If you'll forgive me, my instructor's going to come out of me, I'm going to use the whiteboard here. So what we're, what we're talking about here, the operative question is when? So when you're, when you're trying to solve a when problem, you use some kind of a model that involves time, okay? And there's a, there's a model that we all use every single day, whether you know it or not, and it's the plan, prepare, execute, and assess model. And we are continuously using that model in an individual state, and every organization that we belong to does the same thing. At the individual level, whether you're assessing how your day went and how you're going to change it for tomorrow, or it's your organizational assessment of how do we execute that key event and what can we do to improve ourselves before we do that again? Well, that, that model also applies to education. We saw two great examples of it at the last board meeting when Kerry came to us and talked to us about the cellphone policy. He made an assessment, made a plan, he's got a preparation going, and he's going to execute this school year. Same thing with the kindergarten teachers, kindergarten teachers, they, they did the same thing. A plan, prepare, execute, assess type of model that we're going to see. So the question is where...
Administrators renew.
...belong that line, prepare, or is it best to change leadership? So if we're looking at a linear timeline, I'll make an argument that it's not during January, but during the summer that is best. Okay? So execution for a school district is August to May, right? So from, from May to August is when we have the time to view all the rest of this stuff. We assess how the last school year went, looking at ACT scores, looking at graduation rates, looking at the state assessments, looking at the data that Holly gives us, and all the other things that we assess to include the superintendent's performance, to include the board of education's performance, that we all assess all that stuff. Based on those lessons that we learned, we make a plan for the next school year, we prepare for the next school year, give in guidance to our superintendent, staff, and principals, and we order them to execute the action of the year. So right now, the proposal before us, the motion before us, is to change horses in the middle of our school year.
Okay, just a minute, John.
Yeah. May I finish please?
No.
I'm almost done.
I want to, I want to make a point.
Sure.
Everything you said is correct, okay? There's just one flaw.
What's that?
The state legislature changed the election cycle, and because of that, if we make all these decisions here, in five months, when the new people come on, they're going to have a heck of a mess undoing what we may have done.
Well, they'll have the authority to do that no matter what, because under the way that it's written, that whatever decision that we make today can be turned over in January, so that's irrelevant. So ideally, when we do have control, the further to the left of this timeline is best to make our changes, to establish our leadership, to give that person, whoever it may be, the opportunity to get their feet wet, to do what John said, and take advantage of Jeff's presence, so that that individual is well-established when the school year starts. So I recommend that we don't support this motion. I think that a motion, to support this motion, is to support leadership permanence and not what's best for the district.
Anyone else have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Three-three? All right. Okay, so then the alternatives are either elect new members, which is fine, or go back and re-vote on this eventually. Anybody else have a motion that they would like to put forth?
I make a motion, we wait till August and vote on it, so we have seven members. Or is that too late?
Seven option?
We have, we have to run this meeting. This meeting needs to be run.
We have to renew him now because of the way the law's set up. Or we have to make our change now.
If you don't vote to extend the terms until January, you have to vote to elect new officers tonight. Those are your two choices. That's my reading of this. I mean, and you can, and when you elect officers, it has to be for one year. That did not change. Now, if you, if you decide to elect officers in July, that's an option.
Right.
But come January, you have to reassert that.
Right.
Under the new law.
That's correct.
And, and so your two choices are extend the current terms until January and then sign that resolution, or elect, decide that you're going to elect officers in July now, and then when January comes, the board has to approve of that again, under the law. And I know it's confusing, but, you know, that's what KASB says our two options are.
See, to me, that seems like even more turmoil.
Well, it's, it's not. It's just doing the work of the board. That, what really should happen is that the board leadership should change over in the summer every year, and once that is established...
But it is going to switch. It's going to be, it's going to be January now for now on.
No, the board in January can agree to elections in July according to what KASB has said. So there's really, actually, they, they don't even have to pick July, they can pick June or May. It's, it's up for the board to decide what's best for the district, and, and that's, that's kind of why I originally wanted to support this until I was thinking about, let's look five or 10 years out. And that's what caused me to start doing research on time management at the board of director level, and, and that's where I came across this model. So I'm not just pulling this out of my tail because I want to create turmoil, I want to do what's best for the district by putting leaders in place in a time where they have to, to react. You know, a poor guy who takes office in January is in the middle of the school year. They are hitting the ground running, trying to establish some, to change their head from being a board member to being a board president, as John said, with no continuity. The best continuity that we'll have will be Beth, and she has not been the board president for the past five years. We will have a new superintendent, and we will also have to select a new superintendent. So it's actually, it's advantageous for the new board member to be able to get these five months with Jeff and kind of learn how things go and how to, to set an agenda and kind of the history behind why things happen the way that they do. The rest of it is administrative details, so...
It's a whole lot more disruptive to potentially change your leadership for five months, change it again in January.
I agree. And I do, I do like the fact that board members are elected in July, so, you know, I think in January, you know, that would be the decision, the direction I would go with that decision, based on what you're saying and why. But right now, I'm, I'm supporting that leaving it alone, like I said, and letting whatever, whoever is on the new board make those decisions in January, whether it be a different person that they select for leadership, or what month of the year they think that...
And the incoming people are going to get training, both locally and then go to KSAB stuff, and anybody they elect president is going to have to do a lot of extra homework for the first few months to get their responsibilities under.
So Darrell, could you reiterate something real quick, or make sure I understand?
And by the way, mostly what I know is what KASB has told us, so...
Yeah.
I don't really don't know anything beyond that.
Okay, but you said if we voted tonight to change the board, it would be for a one-year term, correct?
Well...
No, till January.
What, what happens is, so in January, no matter what you do, no matter what, in January, the board has to act on, on when the elections are going to be. The, the problem is, if you look under number, number three under considerations, the law still states the term of officer shall be for one year. Board motion to elect these officers should specify that they will serve in these roles for one year, or until a successor is elected by the board as determined at the designated January board meeting. See, so...
So you're kind of stuck with that framework of time.
The law's a mess, and so that's why they...
It's not good.
The law's a mess.
The, the best thing for the board is to give whoever the new person is an opportunity to, to be coached and mentored by Jeff. And I do agree that I would, based on Jeff's character, I know that he would be available if we push this off to January, but there will be certain things that we won't be allowed to talk to Jeff. There are, he no longer has the board privilege when he leaves office in January, so saying that he'll, he'll be that continuity while he's seeing the country with his bribe like he well deserves is, is an assumption that isn't fair, and that pressure actually shouldn't be put on Jeff.
No, I've offered the services to extend and do it throughout the rest of the year. It's been a pretty coherent five years, another six months is...
And the people that come on, obviously, there's a lot of interest, or you wouldn't have a dozen people running. And I've got a feeling you're going to have some excitement, and you're going to have some new ideas, and some people that may diverge from just about everything we've done before, and that's fine, that could be good. But I don't see any reason to rock the boat at this point when we've got five meetings left.
Well, and I like the continuity right now of continuing for the next five months while we transition with a new superintendent. And, and you know, get that settled in, and then when the new board takes over in January, you know, I think those people, whoever they are, are just going to have to be ready to hit the ground with this, you know?
And they'll learn the way the rest of us did by trial and error.
Okay, well, I, I think the, the motion stalled, so...
Yeah. Do it next month.
No, we don't have that option.
That darn it, you can't.
If you want the meeting to proceed...
So we have to vote to elect new board members. Am I right?
Well, somebody needs to...
Make a motion.
Somebody needs to make a motion, and it needs to be seconded and voted on.
Okay, you made a motion already?
I made a motion for the...
We already voted on it. It was three-three.
Three-three, yeah. Michelle, what are your...
I reintroduced the same motion for consideration. I'm just very nervous of the, I'm kind of right, kind of in the middle. I mean, I understand by extending, because I think that that's good, but I also think that I'm just, when it comes to the new elections, I mean, like I said, there could be four new board members having to vote a president, somebody that they don't, I mean, basically don't know.
That, to me, would have been the case in the last 50 years that we've done it. They've always been elected.
And by the way, no matter what, the board in January has to do that. No matter what you do here, the board has to act in January about when they're going to hold officer elections. That's, and, and they can decide they're going to do it every January, they can decide they're going to do it every July, they can decide they're going to do it every September, whatever. The law does not have, doesn't mention what to do between now and January.
Yeah, that's the problem.
And so you have to decide what you're going to do with officers between now and then. That's the only thing that you're allowed to do.
You, you pointed out that it's for one year, so...
Well, although, good, good question, although it's letting you do whatever you want between now and then. So in January, when the board acts for one year, when the board acts, whatever month they choose, it has to be for 12 months.
I agree.
That's, that's kind of what I was getting at.
Right. Starting...
Well, they have to decide in January.
Okay, so...
But there's no point in us making it harder than that.
Okay, so we've already vote, we've already decided that we aren't supporting that resolution, so now, I guess...
Well, there's a motion on the floor with Demi. Is it correct, Demi?
Yes.
You might want to state it again.
Okay, so I reintroduced the prior motion to extend the board officers as they are now until the end of the year.
My second it.
No need additional discussion? All in favor?
If, if this fails, you're going to have to have an officer election tonight. You understand?
Yep.
So this is from, from, from now until January?
Until January, and that's it.
So it can change?
It will change.
It has to, it has to change in January.
Yeah, you're going to get a new one in January.
It depends.
Well, it will change in January if, if this motion passes, because he's not running for reelection, and he's the president. But no matter what we do here tonight, the board has to act in January about when they're going to hold elections, and it could be right there, or it can be in July, and, and the board's going to have to act on it, and they're going to have to elect officers. And so that's going to be a January thing.
So if a new officer was elected tonight that's still here in January...
They still have to act in January.
The board would still have to decide whether they wanted that officer to remain in place and then select a month of when that...
Yes, the board has to act in January under the new law.
So in January, once we set whatever month like you said, then that's instead?
Well...
If you have to vote them in for a year and you do it in January...
Unless the board changes its mind the following January.
It could be changed every year, but...
That's a new, that's an addition, is every January, this has to be recertified from now on.
Yes.
And that allows incoming board members to influence that and people that are holding their ground to, to prevent them from influencing it. So it's, it's going to be a January thing for infinity and beyond, to use my favorite Disney phrase.
Which it has been July.
Right, right.
Up until this point, all the time.
And July makes sense for leadership continuity. I, I, these guys are clowns that...
That I agree with. I think the July part makes sense, but I think that...
Previously...
New or not, I think board members in January should have a say in what they're inheriting or what they're doing.
And that's always been the law. The law has always been that the election officers will take place the same month as a new board sits. It's just that new boards now sit in January instead of July. That, so that's, it's keeping the law actually the same as far as when you elect officers compared to when new boards take seats.
It's just shifted, and we got a flux, six months.
Right. So either you approve this or you elect new officers, I think.
So my motion is still on the floor.
Sorry, had a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye? All opposed? Oop. You said aye?
Michelle?
Raise your hand if you said yes. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Okay.
All right. There we go.
I am really looking forward to January. Seriously, remember before we built the house of the high school, how many people were running, and it was just frantic, and everybody was, you know, really wound up about it, and we survived it, and I'm sure they're going to survive it and do well, so I'm not going to, but it's going to be fun to watch.
Watch.
It's unfortunate that you feel that.
Watch, watch, not try to get through it.
All right. Everyone have an opportunity to read the agenda and consent agenda?
On the parking lot, Darrell?
Yep.
Thought about, I know the high school's new, but five years out on seal coat and it, you know what I mean?
We, well, right...
To keep it from falling apart like the others have.
What was your question, John?
Well, I mean, just, the Lancing Elementary School parking lot is for seal coat, correct? And the patch and all that?
Okay, that's, that's not on here. This is just for the, this is the playground. Oh, permission to let bids, I'm sorry. Yeah, acting on the, on the intermediate...
13?
Yeah, we don't know whether we're going to actually need bids for the parking lot yet. What we're going to, I mean, we, we, we fill, we patch the holes ourselves, you know, we use hot mix, whatever. This is, this is really crack filling and separate quote or bid, whatever we need, depending on the cost, to seal coat as well. So that's the one we need to do, that I've seen, that's the one we need to do next. The next one after that would be the intermediate school, in my humble opinion.
And the tracks need, the parking lots, but if we're going to continue to use the tracks for all kinds of...
Coincidentally, Dan and I have a list of capital projects, and we're discussing setting out a timeline and that type of thing, so those are part of our ongoing discussions, but tonight it's acting on the, the playground and getting permission for the parking lot. I, I don't think we need bids for the tennis court. We've talked about the French drain. It's a just-in-case thing. You know, I, I think that filling the cracks on the, on the parking lot will be close. You seal coat it for sure, you're going to have to, you're going to have to bid it, because that's an expensive thing. And tell you the truth, the way it looks now, I'd like somebody's opinion who knows more about it. I'd probably fill the cracks, and I don't know if I'd seal coat, I, I want their opinion of whether to seal coat it or just wait until we resurface the parking lot.
Wish the Lansing Intermediate School asphalt playground, where is that going to be?
Right next to the current one, to the current playground. This is phase two.
So in that...
Within the fence perimeter.
Yeah, they're, they're moving a little bit of fence when they do it, but it's, it's within the fence perimeter.
Okay.
That was what I...
It's, it's a lot smaller, it's just a basketball...
Was that the original plan, was to have that asphalt in there?
Yes, the original plan was two phases, phase one, which we've done, and phase two, which you're acting on.
I just didn't remember.
And by the way, our estimate for phase two was $25,000 more than, than our low bid. Yay.
Yeah, I think you were budgeting 75 grand, is that what you said?
Correct, yeah. Now, we still have to buy basketball goals, so, you know, it'll be a little more than that, but that's not...
In the fence, the perimeter needs to be expanded.
Well, yeah, actually, it'll fit in the, in the, in the perimeter, but they would like us just to move it a little bit, so it's not going to be a big deal, but this is just to install the playground.
Gotcha.
I move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Additional discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Anybody that want? Everyone get an opportunity to review the leaf, emergency preparedness, and administrative reports?
I do have a question, and maybe I misunderstood it. Is the Lansing Education Foundation welcome back? Does that conflict with the city, us meeting with the city that same day?
Actually, they just have refreshments, so it's kind of cool, because now we can give the, the city folks some refreshments, too. I thought about that.
Ah, there we go.
And we don't even have to tell them it's not hosting.
Yeah, it's here.
Yeah.
At six.
But I'll make, Sharon's aware, but I'll make sure she knows she'll have enough for some, for some city council members.
Thank you. I do have, I was looking at the website, and we've got some old teachers' pictures in there. Have you issued the staff a deadline of when you want to have all that updated?
Nope. They, they probably don't want any pictures.
In processing. No, I mean, like, the teacher doesn't work here anymore.
Oh, right, right, yeah, Sharon, Sharon will take care of that.
Not like, you're looking old, we don't want your picture anymore.
Yeah, well, there's a good reason for that, but Sharon will have those updated before the school year starts.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, moving to 7 dot 1, the regular, established or regular meeting dates. I'm going to pull that up. It looked like there was only one second Tuesday, or second Monday that needed to be moved. That was for...
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, which I think this year we had three of them that we moved, so, and this also will need to be reevaluated in January.
Because they may want to, because the spring break...
The, the state law, the only thing it, it did was require the board to act on officer elections and meeting dates in January. So you can set them now. Technically, you're only setting them till January, although I can't imagine January Board's going to change these. This is a lot simpler than, so, but...
I move that we approve the resolution for the regular meeting dates for 2019, 2020 as presented. as presented.
Second.
Additional discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? 7.2, the 2009, June 2019 board policy updates from KSB.
Oh.
It was, yeah, light reading. That was nice.
I read 57 pages.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was okay with all of it, but the nepotism one.
Yeah, same here.
And I'm not, we've all had the experience of knowing somebody who was such a super worker, when another member of their family applied, we thought, oh, great, now we'll have two of them. It doesn't always work out. It's bad enough when it's just the rank and file, but when it's family member of a board member, I think we either need, well, let the next bunch of people come up with a policy for dealing with that. If a board member's family, a member of their family has applied, and they are the best qualified candidate, which can be demonstrated by seeing side-by-side resumes or something, get the board in on that. They have to refuse themselves, the board member does, from that kind of activity discussion. But I really think we have a situation that can be awkward and uncomfortable, and I don't know very many administrators are going to say, I want to let this person go, knowing that that person's parent, spouse, or whatever, is going to vote on renewing their contract. And we have had some great people, and we've had some not-so-great people, and it's just real, real awkward when you hire family members of board people. And this thing is, we never have...
It's looking to...
Somebody supervising, well, I got a newsflash for you. When I was hired here, the head of the department was my husband, he was supervising me. And that same thing's going to happen again. When Dan comes up, he's going to have his wife, not under his direct supervision, but there's, we just keep going through this. Most of the time, we muddle through, and it's okay. Sometimes it's a real mess, and I think we need to, and I'm not even going to attempt to come up with that, I want to give that, John likes to plan things, let him plan for that. But we do need to come up with a policy. I know in Leavenworth, it's not allowed at all, and at one point, they wanted to hire a young man who just was perfect for the job, but he was the son of a board member. The board member said, I will resign. They did, hired the guy. He ran again, and they reelected him. But I think there's ethical consideration, and not, I'm not blaming the board, it's just kind of been a pattern of, we want to deal with people we know, and so we're real comfortable with that, and we keep sticking with that, and then we end up with people working for us that potentially aren't living up to our expectations, and nobody's got the courage to say, let's do something about it.
Yeah, the, the recommendation was not to adopt a nepotism policy here that we have, which we've removed, hmm, five, six, seven years ago?
Or longer.
Or longer, yeah.
It's been longer, because I remember once before.
Here's the one part that I absolutely, that is absolutely not workable on this. I mean, if you want to do this, I strongly urge you to change the wording of the first paragraph somehow, or, or assign Dan and I to fix it or something, but the superintendent shall make reasonable efforts to determine whether a candidate for employment is related to or residing with a board member or administrator of the district, a board member or administrator. Okay, first of all, do you know how many employ, how many candidates for employment we have every year? Thousands. And so, I mean, the only thing I could do is just ask you and the administrators to let me know, and, I mean, assuming they know, but I would think, I mean, so, I don't know what a reasonable effort is, but...
We need to have some transparency on this, and we need to also tell our, our administrators, if there is an individual who's not living up to expectations...
I, I agree with Claudia. I think that, for the most part, it's about good order and discipline. I mean, let's just take the Jenkins, for example. Kerry Brungard retires in a couple of years, Brooks moves in to take his position, and his wife applies for the vice principal position. If we, if she's the best candidate, and we don't have a nepotism policy, and we don't hire her, then we are discriminating against her because of her marital status. So what this policy does, and KSB actually does say, you may want to rewrite part of this to fit your district in their, in their form. We want to maintain good order and discipline, that at least there's at least a one-person separation between...
John, I gotta, I gotta point something out. It would not be discriminated against somebody because their marital status. I mean, that's just not, first of all, well, you would discriminate against because you don't want her to be married to the head principal, and you don't allow direct supervision.
You need to think about the effect this has on the people working with them, and believe me, as a former building rep, I have heard up to here about relatives working in the building. Are they spying? What's the idea? How come they were put at the head of the line? Are they really that good?
Well, so our, our current practice would be, in that particular case, is obviously Brooks is a, for example, would not be, he still would not be evaluating his spouse, that would be the other, the new assistant principal.
The other pet peeve I have, while I'm just in a rotten mood tonight, the other pet peeve I have is they say, well, and you just said it, we get thousands of applicants this close to Kansas City, and there's got to be at least a dozen little towns around here people could live and commute in here to work. I don't think our pool needs to be limited to just relatives and friends. I think we need to go for the very best candidate we can get. And I know of a few instances when that has not happened, not recently, but I do know that...
I think that's general practice, is we do try to hire the best candidate.
Yeah, well, there's been a few moments.
But, you know, we obviously can't control anything that maybe has happened in the past, but, you know, I, I think we have to place some trust in our leadership and our board members to handle those situations as they come up with professionalism.
Yeah, but we also need to back up our administrators if they get stuck with somebody that just is not working out in that position.
Well, and create an environment where the administrators feel comfortable in approaching that subject, and feel supported.
Why, why do you recommend no on the hiring of the written part? I mean, is that just a...
So, a part of the policy is no direct supervision, which we already don't do by practice and just common sense.
Change in the subject.
I changed the subject.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Which one?
The one before it on the hiring, the written, I mean, I see that the reason is the written...
Right, we've never had an issue with it, and so what this would require is, when we offer somebody a job, I'm assuming it's going to be email, that we send them an email officially telling them that they're, that they're, I'd have to bring this up, that they're hired, being offered.
Okay, being offered.
It'd be pending board approval.
Right. And so does their email back become...
And then they, and then they would have to...
Respond?
Respond back, they'd have to reply back in writing that they've accepted it.
Okay.
Now, we've never had an issue with this, and see what, and so the other thing is, I believe it's all employment offers. It's not just teachers, so keep in mind that we have 500...
Right, I know.
And so we'd have to, they'd have to be sending emails, I mean, and you think just Paris, you know, that we turn over and...
So is their email back a written copy then?
Yes, yeah. Emails considered legally...
Why do you think KSB recommends this?
They're, they're not recommending it. They're offering it as an option.
Oh, I see.
If I understood correctly. Yeah, the only, the only ones they recommend are the ones you legally have to require, either you're legally required to, the rest of them...
That's not how I read it, but okay.
Yeah. And I think, the reason I think they offered this is because apparently some school districts have gotten a verbal affirmation that somebody's going to accept a job, and they backed out. And KSB lawyers know a lot more than I do, but actually, until you're, I mean, so you're in breach of contract, obviously, if they sign the contract and don't work for you, the only thing you possibly have here, since it's not a contract, an email isn't, is a breach of promise? I mean, I don't even know how far, how legally, you know, I don't want to question the lawyers, but I, I think they said, and I could go back up to, you may recall that I also have their recommendations or their, which one was that?
They have a column that says why, whether they recommend it or not.
GACCA.
Well, they have had verbal agreements, and people have said, yes, I'd love to have the job, and then they never signed the contract. Two weeks later, it's July or August, and they can't, got nobody, they don't have anybody with a written contract.
Right, GACC, okay. There's an awful lot of policies here, sorry, folks.
Yes, we're aware.
Yeah. And I'm trying to get this to go up as fast as it will.
...
It would have been nice to offer a nepotism policy, but they've given us one in another for these small communities, I don't know how they do it there.
Review and adopt if preferred, and so, and the only ones they're saying adopt is if you legally are required to.
Gotcha.
Oh, they, they recommend extending offers of employment in writing requiring, so that is part of the hiring process, that's, that's true. We don't have to adopt the policy. Paper trail and provides evidence of the party's agreement. So part of this slows, we never had an issue, but also, if you make this a policy, then everybody who recommends hiring somebody, that's not just principals, that's custodians, secretaries, food service, an awful lot of special...
Solve a problem you don't have.
If they don't send an email to somebody that they've offered, that they want to hire, then they just violated board policy. I mean, it's just, it, it seems like an awful lot of administrative extra work that, for a problem we've never had an issue with.
So, you know, what would be the risk analysis? If, if we didn't adopt this, and we didn't have a paper trail, does somebody come back and say, you gave my job to somebody else, and I don't understand what the risk is?
Well, I, the only, they don't say this here, my, my guess is, the risk is that we offer a position to somebody verbally, they verbally accept it, having signed a contract. And by the way, we don't do actual contracts with, with non-certified anyway, but they haven't filled their work agreement or whatever. And so they, you know, they, they decide not to take it after they said they would, and now...
Then we would have to sue them.
Now we have to go, well, no, well, no, we have to go find somebody else, go ahead.
And we, and we really don't, if they don't want the job, like, it's not a big, it happens all the time that, oh, no, I got a job somewhere else or whatever. Now, teacher in the contract, yes, tomorrow morning, I'll be sending contracts out. I still don't have to sign contracts from a couple of teachers you guys have already recommended, it's just, it's board approval. So they have been accepted, just because there's no contract signed, isn't really, they have been accepted, approved by the board, that's the, that's the hook.
And then making sure that the email came back in, you know, it's, it's an administrative layer of people that are already pretty darn busy. And don't forget, the vast majority of these, where there isn't a contract, they're at-will employees anyway, so they can resign whenever they want, we can let them go whenever we want. And, and so, I, I don't know why they're saying they recommend extending offers of employment writing requiring acceptance. Review and adopt if preferred. Dan and I, we did this together, we prefer not to have you adopt that.
Could you address the CM or Charlie Mike admin, admin suspension, please? You didn't give them a reason on that one.
Um, I didn't?
No, you did not. You just said no.
Really? Yeah, oh, oh, it's because CM and CGK go together. You, you wouldn't adopt CM unless you do CGK.
Oh, you have to, okay.
Yeah, CM goes with CGK. I don't remember how, it's been a couple of months, forgive me. But the reason for both of them is that, you know, we wouldn't, so you either do them both, or you don't do them, is because, I mean, it's, it's specifically pointing out admin suspensions, and the superintendent can already, you know, the superintendent can't fire anybody, licensed personnel, they can only suspend. But we, but the policy GBK, so CM and CGK would change it a little bit, but GBK already allows the superintendent to suspend licensed personnel. Administrators are licensed personnel.
Right.
No doubt.
You can suspend them with pay, we could suspend them without pay.
You can only suspend them without pay if there's due process, and...
As part of the bill.
And, and the answer to what's that is, I call KSB when you tell me to.
Yeah.
So, anyway, so that, that's why, I mean, it really wouldn't matter if we had it, it's just that it's not needed, and it's a new, it's a new policy we, I don't think we need. The book's already this thick.
You don't need it till you need it, though.
Well, but, and we have it. I mean, if we didn't have the authority to suspend administrators, then I'd want this, but we have, we already have that authority.
So it's redundant?
Redundant.
Yeah, there you go, redundant's a good word, I should have just said redundant.
All right, well, I move that we approve the June 2019 board policy updates with the administrative recommendations as presented.
So does that mean that we're going to rewrite the nepotism one in July?
If it's, if you do it as, if you do it as recommended, we're recommending that you don't adopt GACC.
Yeah, we're not doing nepotism.
But, so you would need to direct me on something else, but we're recommending against it.
So I had a motion, second was...
I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
John, it's been a long eight years on that issue.
And the board can, the board, as you know, like, when you do your goal-setting or whatever, can say, hey, let's look at a nepotism policy that's maybe different, or let's rewrite this and use this as a, as a basis or something?
Lansing-sized.
Yeah.
7.3, the KSB delegate assembly representative. I know, John, that you're, performed that duty last year. Are you wanting to perform that duty again?
I'm here to serve the board, I, I don't have any problems with it.
Just going to ask him to see if he wants to first, before...
He's going to give me a courtesy call. I'll be a...
If you want to do it, I mean...
I can, yeah. Or go with you.
You want to spread the wealth, or do it together?
That's fine.
Actually, the go with is excellent, because I think that people undervalue that training, and it's really, you have to pick and choose what really works for your district on the training thing, but it's really good, and I'd love to see more people go.
Okay.
So go with, in anticipation, and maybe next year, you'll take over.
Hey, John, I'll stay the primary, so I have to do the paperwork afterwards.
Perfect.
But you come along and be my shadow.
That's a great idea. Thank you, John.
Well, I move that we...
And John?
Elect John Haddock as our KSB delegate assembly representative for this year.
Second.
All in favor?
You second yourself.
He did, it was awesome. It was a power move right there, it was nice.
Okay, so then John seconded himself?
He did, yes.
If that's not legal, I'll say second.
I can do that. Budget work session date.
Okay, now, last year, you may remember that I wanted to have a budget work session because we had two new board members that hadn't been through that yet. And, and you don't need it, I mean, it's up to you, and it's, you know, the budget is mostly about mill levies, and it's not about what you're going to spend, it's about your authority to spend it, and sometimes you need more authority, you republish later, which we've all experienced. So you don't have to do this, I can send it to you, and you can ask me questions, or we can have a budget work session, and if we end up needing to get bids for one or both of those projects, you could act on that, and it becomes a special board meeting, but whatever your preference, the dates I asked you to look at were the 22nd through the 31st, if you were interested.
I'm, I'm open to whatever dates you want, but I would like to do it, because I think it's one of my...
I'd like to do it, too.
One of my weaknesses. You pick the day, though.[1745.83] You pick the day, though.
I'm not good on the 25th.
No, 25.
Christmas in July.
Any other, any other no's on dates?
I still don't know.
Wednesday, the 24th, is it?
24th of...
Wednesday of July?
July.
Does that work for...
What are you saying?
24th, Wednesday. Does that work? You were a no on the 25th, right? So, yeah.
Yeah.
Just back it up to a Wednesday.
Does that work?
Good, good. Michelle, good?
Is it good?
John, you're good? Okay, all right. Well, I move that we set July 24th.
So noon, you get food. Six o'clock, you don't.
Well, but we got work. Are you working with someone?
We'll do, we'll do six. Yeah, we'll do six because...
I can be here at noon.
Beth can't.
Beth usually can't. I don't know if it's important, but...
I'm off.
Okay.
I definitely...
Let's just do six. Six PM.
Yeah, I can have food for you. You say the words.
I like noon, but I understand that some people hate noon.
It doesn't matter a lot.
Whatever is...
You can do it, too? I can do whatever.
Whatever. You call it, while you can.
About five. Six P M, I can do noon, too. Are you going to be there?
Yeah, I'll be there.
I can make it.
Six PM? You go with that or you want noon?
No, I want noon.
She said this meeting noon.
All right, I'll go with that.
I'm good with noon.
Food is good.
The time of day is good. You're not tired and we usually get them down.
12 PM, 7:24.
Got it. We'll have lunch.
So I made a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right. Holly, you are up, seven to five.
Thought I'd open for questions. What questions do you have on these two resources and quotes?
I'm not sure we... I don't think we saw that.
How much backstory you need on this.
I didn't see.
Okay, I read it, but that was four days ago before I had Waves of Company.
Oh, you sent that in an email, didn't you? Okay, yeah, it's not up here, sorry.
That's okay. So the two resources that are up for you tonight, the first is physical science. The 612 Science Department has written new curriculum aligned to the new state standards and, which are aligned to the national standards, which are the next-generation science standards. We've done a lot of work in curriculum and instruction and so they need new resources. So we will still have other resources, both 6-8 for the middle school and high school courses. The only one that's ready to make a decision at this point with teacher input was physical science. So that textbook, which has digital versions and also classroom sets, but for the most part, students will be working digitally. Every student have a digital copy, but then there'd be classroom sets for the four teachers that are teaching that, and that is for about $23,000. And that's a six-year adoption period. We're trying to, as you know, with our KESAC goals, as we go through each curricular area, we're trying to align that seven-year cycle that the state revises standards on. Now, one caveat that you should know is the state standards are actually up for revision in science this year, but I've been in communication with the State Department of Education and they don't anticipate almost any changes to those, so I feel confident going ahead and selecting a resource. So we would have a resource basically at the beginning of a standard cycle. The other resource that's up for adoption here in your approval is the middle school 6-8 ELA. High school also has some resources they like as well, but that still needs to run through a process and protocol of our district leadership team, and then I plan on bringing that in August. So the piece that's here tonight is they voted for the, and recommended, district leadership team recommends as well, this product from AgroHill called StudySync. And so that is compatible with iPads. Students can have digital copies of texts. It has lots of instructional resources and things that teachers vetted. And so these are both things that we piloted last year with a lot of instructional resource pilots going on, so that teachers can really get a feel of what it would be like to adopt this resource as much as we can. And so this is what they ended up with. And so that cost there, and both of these are upfront, one-time costs, that cost for those digital texts are $56, $756.
And the teachers, in all cases, are in favor of it.
Yes. It's a very, very comprehensive process that I have them go through, where they pilot and then they fill out, I've shared it with you before, but it's like the seven-page rubric on, you know, where's the alignment to the standards, how teacher-friendly is it, is there differentiation, are there interventions built into the program? It asks a lot of details. Is it a technology backbone? What are the assessments like? Can you alter the assessments and customize them? It has a lot of questions. And so we dig really deep. The teachers who pilot, fill out those surveys, they, that comes into me and I compile that data, and that's data I share right back with the department at grade level to fill them out, so they can see the quantitative and qualitative parts, what the overall, and then we have a discussion. And that's how in middle school, they actually, it was a difficult discussion because there was one grade level in particular that wasn't as on-board as the other two. And so we looked at the data and then we talked about, you know, here's where we are and here's where we want to be, and is this the right resource? Knowing that no resource is perfect, but we need to choose the best resource that we think is the best fit. And so teachers are involved all along there. And so then, once I talk to the grade level department, it goes to the building leadership team, and then they talk about it, they look at the data, they make a recommendation, and then it goes to the district leadership team, and we look at the data, we talk about it, and then they make a recommendation. And once that happens, if the district leadership team makes a recommendation, that's what I bring to you. And so that way, we have all of that process involving as many people as possible so that we're picking the best resource we can and...
And you don't think there's going to be major changes in the science?
No, that's what they've said, directly from the person in charge of science. They don't even have a committee formed yet, but the state is, they put out a statement last year, and it wasn't exactly clear, but what I think they were aiming at is that they really would like to get away, even though state statute requires the standards committee revision every seven years, they really don't want standards revision to be dictated by a calendar. It just seems very arbitrary to do it every seven years. What they want instead is consistent, maybe yearly feedback from the field and districts to say, "This is what's working, this isn't what's working," and then maybe just have a more continual revision and not just wait every seven years, and then magically that's the number that we revise the standards. So because they sent that message out kind of a year ago, really trying to prep districts for that, that I think that's, this is going to be the first major area to go through and say...
I like the idea of incremental changes because teachers get so tired of, "I've just mastered this thing and it's going smoothly and I have backup resources," and then boom.
And I think that's what's happened, is districts are just, sometimes it takes a year or two...
It takes at least a couple of years.
...to get the curriculum written and to get new resources. And so by the time you do all that work and the state assessments are aligned, so we know for math, like we took the state assessment this last year and it was not aligned to the new state standards that we're supposed to be implementing. So there's that alignment gap of several years, and so by the time everyone gets aligned, it's usually time for revision. So I think that's what they're trying to do, is kind of that madness, even though state statute still requires seven years, they're trying to alter that and not make the seven-year mark so big. They're trying to do it more incrementally.
Less upheaval. And you're basically just wanting us to approve your expenditure?
Yes.
I make a move, I make a motion that we approve the two suggested paths and fund them.
Second. That works for me.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
You, too. Thank you.
All right. Executive session. Move that we go into executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance and personnel changes pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma, and the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at 8:10 PM. You need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.